Good morning.
Hi, Michael.
Morning, Michael. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
You're good. Yes, you're good.
I'm not sure, though. Michael, could you speak up again? Because I could barely hear you here.
Can you hear me? How does this sound? Is this sounding okay?
It's a little low, Michael. We're gonna try to make sure we're connected right here.
Okay.
Michael, can you speak again so we can see if we fixed the audio?
Is this any better? Can you hear me any better with this?
No, that's the same, Michael. We'll keep working.
I'm trying to plug in some headphones and a microphone. We'll see if that works.
It's on our. It's on our.
It's coming through our computer instead of the system, so it's we. Now, we can hear you clearly, but it's quiet.
Got it.
Try one more time, Michael, if you'd be so kind.
Is this any better? Can you hear me any better? I wish I was there in person. It's a full house today.
Oh.
One more time.
One more time.
Does this sound any better? Is the volume improving?
No, goodness.
A little bit, maybe?
I heard you just a second there. Let's try it again.
I'm in lovely Mount Pleasant, South Carolina, visiting relatives.
Oh, no, okay.
It was a 10-hour drive yesterday. No fun.
And?
Is that working any better or no? I could also just use the chat.
I think those are should be all good. And? Try again, Michael.
If this volume isn't getting any better, I can also use the chat.
I was gonna change. While you're speaking, go ahead.
Okay, uh, let's see. I hope the volume is improving, so this meeting can run successfully.
Yeah.
Not a great start. Okay.
Shoot, because I could I could hear you just the tiniest bit there. I think this is the right one, but. Try again.
Okay, is this any better? Can you hear me any better with this? Is it coming through?
Possibly go back to the original configuration where we could be easier.
Yeah, it was low, but yeah, at least we can hear it.
Okay, let me see. Last one here. Give that a try.
Okay, is this working any better? Can you hear me when I'm speaking?
We can.
We can at least hear you here. I'm gonna see. I'll let me grab another speaker. All right, be right back.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning. Welcome to the Library Board of Trustees Meeting of December 19th. I'll call the meeting to order, but we do have a quorum. Most of the board members are here, and Michael Dunn is with us on Zoom. So I'll ask you then to introduce yourselves as we typically do on our meetings, and Michael, we'll start with you.
Good morning. Greetings from Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. My name is Michael Dunn. I'm the Vice President of the Board.
I'm John Johnston.
Trust is set like treasure.
Power trustee.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is your approval of the November 21 meeting minutes. So I'll make the motion to accept the meeting minutes if I can get a second. Second? Did I? Twenty twenty-two meeting minutes. Okay, we do have a second. Any questions, comments, changes? All in favor of accepting in November 2022 meeting minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. Okay. Jess, is there anything you have to report at this? Well, I'm sorry. The EALs, let me go through those. Again, in your package, you should see the EAL or the expenses that were paid out over the course of the month. So I'll make the motion to EALs if I can get a second. Any questions, comments? On the EALs? They seem pretty straightforward this time. Okay, all in favor of accepting the EALs as provided, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
With music.
Jess, or anything that you want to report?
I don't have a formal report. I don't have the current thing, but I did reach out to the financial advisor for the person who wishes to donate stock to us, and I did get the information from Vanguard, which I passed on to them, so that transaction is in process. I don't have an exact dollar amount at this point, but I will let everyone know in the next meeting. The final report on that.
If I recall, you now have signature authority?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, they're gonna contact me as soon as the is finalized, so we have all that information.
Stock transfers as well.
The next item is a Smurler report, and actually, if you look down on your agenda, we'll be mentioning, or Michael will mention something about Smurler, so there are a few points about that that we can bring up later. So, Michael, you're up next.
All right. I'm sorry, Michael, I can't hear you.
Gone over. Can you hear now?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
Feel like I should break into song or something here with this. Um, so the substitute salaries are typically over percentage at this point. Unfortunately, we just don't have enough money to fill in gaps in the schedule when we need to. So admin and COVID hours, we're still win people test positive for COVID, having them stay out and covering that expense for your instructions all the way back in January. We just continue the federal COVID guidelines for that sort of thing because frankly, it's best not to have people who are testing positive come to work, and they may feel they can't afford not to. I'd say also something that I'm most concerned about, if you look on page two of six, the Lexington Park Telephone Electric and Water Sewer and Trash, the Leonardtown Telephone, and the Hall Water Sewer Trash, and the Admin Telephone. A lot of those are not particularly large budget lines, but they are well over, and we're looking to have to add money in those accounts for next fiscal year, and those reflect several things. Utility costs have gone up. And then it was an extremely warm, for the most part, period from July all the way through late October, and so higher than normal utility costs, I would say, but with the cold weather coming on and a cold winter forecast, we're gonna go over on those. So I think we probably need to look at asking for more money there. The digital collection is up at seventy-three percent, but we don't always, are not always responsible for getting digital for the month, which we do. So that is another area where we're definitely gonna have to have more money for next year, I would say, if we want to continue providing good digital services, and in the month of November, we saw that digital eBooks and digital audiobooks were forty-five percent of our overall circulation. This item continues to grow. It is something that is in high demand, and you'll have to look at rebalancing what money we do have, but I think a better solution is simply going to be to add to that. Other than those a lot of them where they're over are just very small budget lines, so it looks like a higher percentage, but it might be fifteen, twenty, maybe three or four hundred dollars. So in terms of the overall budget, we're not looking at anything particularly significant. Questions?
On the trash line, is this a contract? Poller, like Waste Management or somebody like that?
Yes, it is.
And are they like the town of Leonardtown? Is that contracted by the Lexington Park Authorities or whatever, and then appropriately portioned out?
There are no Lexington Park Authorities. The library has that contract. Lexington Park's not incorporated.
Right.
Same thing for Charlotte Hall. We have those contracts.
Are they up for examination?
I don't know. Waste Management's got the only game in town. All right, well, moving on to some really good news. This past week, Mr. Lloyd Timberlake presented for the Friends of the Library and before the County Commissioners, and I'd like to thank the County Commissioners, the Board of Elections, and Buildings and Grounds. They gave the Friends a three-year lease on the former shooting gallery space in the Armory where they've been located for a number of years. And there's also a two-year possible extension, one year at a time, so possibly up to five-year lease on that space, and that saves the Friends at least $2,000 a month, which of course is then $2,000 a month, which comes to the library. So I'm very grateful for the Board of Elections who own, you know, they 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 are in the space now, and they're good neighbors with our friends, and the Buildings and Grounds people who are taking care of that space and maintaining it have upgraded some of the some of the heating issues that were there. So it looks like the Friends are set for at least three years, and we'll hope for an extension of at least two more. Any questions on that?
Is that of that building?
No, it's in the back of the building. There's a separate back entrance, and if you step just inside, right ahead of the door is another closed door. To the left is a door where the building, the Elections Board can close off their space completely, and you go in inside there, and not surprising since it was a shooting range, it's a little cavernous. There are not any windows or anything, other than right up the front in a very small one, but it's a great space for our friends, and it also means they didn't have to move all their books, they didn't have to move their shelving, negotiate for a new sort of space, so we're very grateful for that.
So will they stay partially where they are now?
They're gonna stay there where they are, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The next agenda item, I was gonna share something more detailed with you. I was supposed to have received a document from State Library. It didn't arrive in time. Tell you a bit about a bill that's coming forward in this upcoming legislative session. It's about library collective bargaining. So the first thing I want to do is give you the background to it. Last legislative session, two bills were brought forward to unionize two particular county libraries, Baltimore County and Hartford County. And the Baltimore one went through, and the Hartford one did not. And they were drafted basically both by the same union, but the one for Baltimore County was considerably more neutral. The one for Hartford, in the middle of the legislative session that the legislator bringing it forward amended it to be for the entire state. So here are the guidelines for unionizing all the libraries in the state, and it did not make it out of committee, but the chairman of the committee said, okay, I'm tired of getting all these separate bills. So just a brief history. Howard County is, has been for years, had code in the Maryland Library laws. This is how a union effort would take place if it were going to happen. They've never unionized, but the code is there. More recently than Montgomery County and Prince George's County have unionized for several years, and this past year Baltimore County did, and now Pratt Library Baltimore City is, and they haven't finalized their negotiations, but the chairman of the committee said, all right, just bring me an omnibus bill. I want your feedback on how this would happen, if it's going to happen. So we are in the process of drafting a bill that would be for the entire state, and we're trying to be very fair with this. This is not, all right, the library director's gonna get together and put together a bill. What means that anybody looking at will say, well, no point in unionizing. Instead, looking at what we think might be fair, it only guides the process. Unionization, if it happens, would take place on a county level, and but we figure it's better to have our input there rather than allow a union to draft the bill and put it forward for the whole state, and it will talk about how the process happens, and if it happens, what happens. And I will have a draft of the bill to show to you, I'm hoping next month at this time, but if not next month, February ninth, it would be in February, and you can see exactly what's in it. But the legislation hasn't been drafted yet, and so we're just looking to move that forward. And again, this is not an effort to either put a poison pill into unionization or to make it attractive. It's just to try to make sure that if a county moves forward, and it looks like several more, the unions are kind of working with staff there to try to make that happen, that the process would be done fairly in a way that would benefit employees, that would not put an undue onus on administration. So questions about that one?
And behind the effort now?
I don't know. They haven't been in our area. I can find that out for you if you like. But I believe it's the machinist. I'll double check that.
Michael, are there any local laws that would complicate issues in the different counties?
Possibly, but I would think that a state law is going to supersede those if it's for the whole state. And again, i- in terms of what's happening, we're not necessarily looking at many of them, certainly the rural counties seeing union efforts. They tended to be centered more around some of the larger, more populous, and by larger, any more populous counties in the central area. But we we suspect that a couple more of those may be targeted before a, you know, a sort of more rural or suburban slash rural county like ours.
So, Michael, you said, is it the Director's Association? Who's drafting the legislation?
The Maryland Library Association is basically gonna be drafting this with a- along with input from the Directors.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
It's actually MAPL, the Maryland Association of Public Library Administrators, but I- again, we're trying to make this something that will be fair for everybody, and it's not, I would say, an anti-human bill by any means. Well, our new trustees have been appointed by the County Commissioners, and I thank this board for its input in selecting those, and we'll be welcoming next month Dorothy Waters, Sharon Fitzsimmons, and Judith Quinn. I've already met with Ms. Waters and talked to her about what's going on at the library and what she will be getting herself into for five years. And the others I have emails out to, and we're working on a time to meet with them, and I give them an orientation packet, and the board bylaws, and basically just make sure that as they're as ready as they can become January, although since one of the first things they'll be doing is looking at a budget, they're jumping into the deep end. But very grateful to those people for willing to serve the Library Board and to everybody who applied. It's a big responsibility. It's a five-year term unpaid, and so we had twelve people put their names forward, and we did forward names to County Commissioners for their final choices. So that's who's coming in. Questions about that one?
Question. I'm coming up on the end of year two, and I think there are some things that have transpired that would need to be updated in my manual, and I suggest that if we, as individuals, want to, we turn it back so it can be repopulated with the same materials you're giving the new people.
Sure, that's no problem, and in in terms of the manual, we actually have a new trustee sort of document that I gave to this board, and we'll be talking with the board. It was that survey of board effectiveness, so that's something that they're getting as well. So you'll be having that discussion around that, and if there's possible changes you'd like to be seen made to anything, we can maybe use that as a chance to work on those changes.
Okay, thank you.
And to note, this is really the most significant number of new trustees coming on board that I can recall. I don't think you either, Janice, so it's gonna be a big change in the board makeup in 2023.
Yeah, the the, I can't remember any more than two coming on at the time previously, at least in my seven years here. So yeah, this will, this will be interesting time for us. Well, speaking of trustees, we will have a visit next month from Beth Roth, a former St. Mary's County Library trustee, who's currently the representative to the Southern Maryland Regional Library Association Board. And with Tom Russell unfortunately dealing with his wife's illness and leaving the board, this group does not have a representative on the Southern Maryland Regional Library Association Board. So Beth is going to talk about that. I believe what we have to have is somebody from our board sitting there, and also an at-large citizen from St. Mary's County, and Beth can be the at-large citizen of St. Mary's County. I don't know at this point if she's interested in continuing in that role. Maybe that's why she's planning on visiting us. But we do need somebody from this board, and while I hate to put it on a new person, we can consider doing that. It would just be, you know, something yet again for that person to learn and meetings that person would have to go to. So put it out there, if any of the current members who are going on would be interested in serving on the Southern Maryland Library Association Board.
Yeah, and again, just to add to that, and the reason why you're looking for one person is that currently you're gonna have two members of this board on this Smurler board, but that will change with new legislation, so there's no sense in gearing up and then bearing back. But yeah, I don't know what Beth's plans are. Basically, the new member introductions are done in March, which is their annual meeting, but they can be done earlier if you're replacing a current individual, who, of course, at this point is Tom. So yeah, certainly, you do need representation, and Beth will get into some of the things that are going on with Smurler to give you an idea of what's involved.
All right, so thank you for that. I will move over to action items, and we've got some big ones today. The first is the manager for our OPEB or the Employee Retirement Fund. It has been Asset Strategy, and they are still the de facto manager for the OPEB fund. We've been looking at options, but basically, at this point with this kind of board here, I don't necessarily want this to move forward in the new year and have it be a decision for the new board. The library can decide this on its own, but my my sense is that if we're not seeing any movement forward, and we don't necessarily know who's willing to take it on, that we continue with Asset Strategy for a year and plan out then how to transfer if we're going to, but Asset Strategy would like us to sign a contract if they're going to be the OPEB manager, not surprisingly.
I think again, and Michael and I talked about this issue, you know, because it is a responsibility to the library, so I think what really we're looking for now is just the opinion of this board on staying with asset strategies or or not. Again, this is kind of awkward, but some of us are coming off, but I would think that you should continue with asset strategies. You, as Mike indicated, you have three new members coming on board, and it's kind of a tough issue to throw at them in that short a timeframe. Again, there I'd like input from the other board members.
Getting everybody up to date on my efforts here. I have a draft proposal from the Edward Jones guy. I did not bring it, I do not want to bring it forward until we figure out, and this is kind of a circular thing, we figure out what the Jones attorney's quote problem, and it may not rise to that level. Problem is with the library being a Jones client. I have been pestering McLernan, Williamson, Stack, Mr. His name Brewster. Now, I know he is leaving them, but every time I ask for the person who's representing the library, they send me to him, so he is not disconnected from us, and he is not a responsive individual. What I would, oh, in addition to which, Michael made a comment to a gentleman in what Rotary? About Cedar Point.
Yeah, I I know somebody in Cedar Point in Rotary and just said, you know, is this something that Cedar Point would take on?
Yeah, right. So their rep had been out with some sort of a family emergency, but she and I did talk last week, and I've got a feel for how they work. It's not really Cedar Point. It's a brokerage firm called Connor, Townsend, and Kent, and they are a wholly owned subsidiary of an insurance company up in the Northeast, I think Monumental Life, but I'm not certain about that. So with the changeover- So with the changeover, Mr. Brewster leaving the firm, what I would like to suggest is that if possible, we not continue or we do a short-term contract with asset strategies until we can close some loops that we've been trying to close for some time now and then bring a new board up to speed so that they can have input.
Any other thoughts?
I, I think that we should just stay with asset strategy for the next upcoming year and till the new board is fully here and acclimated. And then we can discuss it further as a new board.
Janice.
We, we basically need to sign a contract with them. But if we do, what we would probably do is what would be standard, which would be a one month for both sides to say, all right, that's the end of the contract. So it would allow us to, if we come up with a better alternative to on a fairly short notice changeover, that would of course, and you know better than I do, would a big change that would be, would involve, you know, complete reinvestment. But if we come up with a better alternative than a contract that had a one-month, you know, possible expiration on the agreement of either side would allow us that flexibility.
But that provided we had a short-term escape clause built in.
Well, that's, that's no problem. I think there already is one in the contract we've signed with them. Certainly, that's something we look for in any contract we sign, just because it, it, you know, if something changes rapidly to our disadvantage, we always want the ability to, to renegotiate or be out of the contract. So all right, well, that's what we'll do then. And I'll be in touch with the asset strategy people. Thank you very much. And we'll continue to move forward with others as a possibility.
Yeah. And not to compadre, but I think important too that as responsibly for managing those funds, you need to know the benchmark and how the funds are performing against those benchmarks. We haven't gotten that report now for the third quarter. So I think we really need to ensure that we have an end of the year or fourth quarter report that shows where we are relative to the benchmarks that have been established.
Well, I don't know that any, many people are reading their benchmarks that they forecast those in January for the whole year. It's been a bit of a bloodbath on Wall Street, but.
Well, again, benchmarks work that way though, because they're comparable funds and comparable arrangement.
And with the forecast of a possible recession ahead of us, which is actually a segue to our next agenda items.
Michael, do we need a motion for that or we just?
It's really just a library thing. So I just wanted, you know, your.
Thank you.
We were, you know, having ongoing discussions. So that's kind of what we do. So, and that is our fiscal year 24 budget request and what we should ask for. Now, that budget is due to the county on February 13th and, I'm sorry, January 13th. And we'll have that in place. Our next meeting is on January 9th. It was moved up a week because of the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. But that turns out to be a good thing because it's going to allow you to approve a final budget request, which is within the board's purview. I recommend, but you have to be the ones who say, yes, here's what we're going forward. And we have a presentation for you about this and some background on that presentation. This is not my PowerPoint, although I have had substantial input into it. Most of the numbers, you'll not be surprised, have come from Belinda. Laura has put together the PowerPoint. This was presented to me late last month by the assembled management team. And I will be honest with you, they are very concerned about staff pay and staffing around. This has been a tough time for our employees, many of whom took a job at, you know, the rate they have now. And now we've seen rapid inflation, prices going up. They are also aware, because frankly, we try never to hide anything from our employees, that Charles County Library's budget is over $7 million a year compared to our 4.3 million. And that Calvert Library is $6.6 million a year compared to our 4.3 million. People in this room, not me incidentally, have received offers to leave our employment for more lucrative opportunities. So far, they have not taken it, but I'm also concerned about losing some of our most talented employees who have come in, in some cases are out of county and you know, that they have a spouse who also works, but it's a struggle for them. When there's people not far away paying for the same position much, much more. And this is something that happens with other agencies in the county, of course. We nevertheless are concerned about keeping our best. We have had substantial turnover, as you're going to see. So that's the background to this is that I would say that this PowerPoint represents the role of the management team. All of whom have microphones and I've been invited to comment as they see fit today. So let's go ahead and start taking a look at this. I should point out ahead of time that all these big years are based solely on the last five years of what the county has given its employees versus our employees. This does not factor in other sort of expenses by and large. It's not like we've gotten many of those anyway. But I should tell you that this is all about employee versus employee here. This is not, you know, buildings or anything else built into this. This is just what people are getting. So.
Mike, before you begin, Michael Dunn, are we still hearing you? Because you haven't commented in some of the earlier discussions.
I am hearing everything. Can you hear me?
That's what I was afraid of. Yeah, we're not hearing you, Michael.
I'm also in the chat, so I can speak there funny too.
When you might have. I don't know what's going on with this. I'll talk in a couple.
Can you try again?
Can you hear me now? I can raise my hand or cause a commotion if I need to make a comment.
Okay, you're going to be quiet, but I can hear you. So we're going to try to put a microphone when you talk.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Sounds good.
Oh, I can hear him. So, okay. All right. So if we could slide, please.
Well, before we do that, Michael, were there any comments that you wanted to make on our early discussions that we just didn't hear you?
No, no, no. I'm good. Thank you.
Actually, you're coming in stronger now. Oh, there we go. Great. Here's a little review of some of our salary changes since fiscal year 2015, the year before I got here. The minimum wage law went into effect in fiscal year 17 and it's going to be up to $15 by fiscal year 25. So that's a kind of rolling increase up to $15 per hour. The Commissioners of St. Mary County have approved over our last nine budget requests, three COLA adjustments, one small salary carry realignment and seven staff increases. And we're going to see a slide later that makes an explicit comparison to what our employees were given versus the county. I should point out that as of 2015, the library was separated from the county in terms of employees. Our, our employees are not officially county employees, although we have an M U to get benefits through the county. I do not know why that change was made and have never heard what I considered a great explanation for it. Possibly it was a mutual decision. But we will see the effects it had on staff over time. Three new staff members were added in the nine fiscal years despite continuous growth in library services. I should point out that's actually 2.5. When Leonard Town Library was built, the budget included two full-time positions and we were given 0.5 of those one year and asked to prove that we needed more. Well, of course, COVID instantly happened, so proving that we needed more was difficult. In any case, I'm grateful for the two mobile library positions that they did give us. So in the last nine fiscal years, we've grown two and a half positions now. We have created more full-time and often what we've done is we've looked at any extra money we might have from, say, the state. We'll see those numbers later and said, okay, how can we take somebody who's part-time and make them full-time? And my pledge to the staff coming on board here was that we will never again do what was done so frequently before me, to just take a full-time position, split it in two, so that we don't have to pay them. Slide please. Okay, so quite a few budget challenges that we face currently. Other Southern Maryland libraries are offering some new services. Those include Fregle, which is a music service, Canopy, which is a digital movie service. And we don't have those. And do we get requests to add them? Yes, we do. Do we have the funding to do that? No, we don't. Overall, compared to some previous years, we have had to have a decrease in number of programs and initiatives that we do. We are seeing rising costs in books, DVD and digital content and especially digital content. I pointed out to you earlier that 45% of our circulation of number came from digital. And digital unfortunately is more expensive than the print equivalent, as I've been pointing out to you for quite a number of years now. But we, we don't basically have as broad and deep a collection as we might have at one point in time. And collection is one of the main reasons why people come to St. Mary's County Library. We have seen that growth in digital and I'd say if we look just more recently, it's actually even higher of percentage than that, but definitely way up. What we've had to do over the years is when we may not have gotten money for a COLA or a staff is say, what's the state money? Is there any other place where we can get money to try to offer that to our employees? And you know that you've occasionally authorized a COLA, for example, even if we didn't get the money from another source. So we're seeing heating, cooling, furnishings. Our furnishing budget's like $10,000 a year. And that buys about one piece of furniture at these days. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I just want to point out that the podium up here is broken and that piece of equipment probably costs $10,000. And that's the type of thing that we're dealing with.
So two concluding points then, that adding new services and expanding to a new Leonard Town Library without additional FTEs has really led to challenges in staffing the library, ordering materials, holding programs, just running things. And it's exacerbated by the low salaries that we have in our region. And we're going to see some details about the turnover. Slide please. So basically, we're looking at budget problems. There's no place where there's any give at all at this point. The only place where we have what we could call excess, and they're not funds, is in materials. Everything else is at budget or exceeding budget, as we saw earlier with some of the utilities. So we're seeing rising costs continue. And this has created some high turnover. And turnover doesn't just lead to a loss of institutional knowledge. We have to retrain those people. One thing that I think we can all be very happy about is that although we have and we're going to see at 40% turnover just this year, the fact that we are still able to hire really great people. I don't think we've lost the staff and customer service. But as we cycle through employees, we have to spend more time training, more time getting those people up to speed, less time on programming, less time on just efficiently doing their job because they haven't had the training yet. We were not included in the St. Mary's County Government Salary Survey, which lasted three years and we'll see specific figures later. One problem that we're running into is salary compression. So currently, our entry-level customer service positions are slightly below minimum wage of $15 an hour. So our pages and the library is built on pages. I'm not, you know, I'm not saying pages aren't important or incredibly important, but they're going up. So within two years, they're going to be at a range where they're equaling our customer service staff who have more training, who are on desk, who have to work with the computer, who'll have to solve customer disputes. And that kind of narrowing of the gap creates a morale issue of its own in that those people who are doing much more are not going to be paid more. So we have been using money from other budgets basically to cover our rising costs. We reached a point where we just can't do that anymore without dipping in the materials budget. We already have to an extent. But we're seeing some other issues here. The Friends of St. Mary's County Library obviously couldn't have as many sales during the pandemic time. They do fantastic work. Grateful for all that they do, but we did see that donations were down from that source. Slide please. So this is physical item checkout. This is not digital. And like to compare us to Calvert and Charles and we're the gold line at the top. Our circulation exceeds that of the other counties. Per capita is probably roughly on par with Calvert. They've got fewer people than we do, but compare that to Charles County. And you see that really the dip was already starting for our fiscal materials and then went way down during the COVID years. It's starting to spike back up. But what we're seeing is that Calvert and Charles are closing the gap faster. They're recovering more quickly from the pandemic. And in large part, that's because of the staff, the ability to offer programs. That's bringing people into their libraries in a way we're just not able to keep up with. So it's not like we have to be the number one circulating library in Southern Maryland. It's just that we want to be the number one circulating in my library now. Please slide. So this is the overall percentage of St. Mary's County Library that is given to the Library Board of Trustees. And most of it goes to the Board of Education. We're not complaining about what everybody else gets. All we're saying is that if you look from fiscal year 2015, when we were at 0.94% of the county budget, 94, 97, 99, 98, almost 1%, oops, 93, 81, 70, 70, the county budget has gone up considerably and we've been almost flat funded compared to that total number. And if you ask about Charles, their library is about 2% and, I'm sorry, Calvert's about 2% and Charles is about 1.5% of the county budget. So you see that dip. Slide please.
Do we know that number for Calvert?
Yes, Michael, that's the 2% we're figuring.
Thank you.
1.5% for Charles. So here's an overview of 2015 through 2023 of what the county gave its employees and what we got. So we got a market adjustment salary scale in fiscal year 2015, the year I basically arrived here. And a 2.5% increase total. So in 2016, we got 2.5% and six, and it was a total of 6.5, 6%. But then start looking where we didn't get things, including the COLA, not in 2016, not in 2017, not in 2018, not in 2019. And COLAs are really important because it raises the base salary. So even though it's 1%, you're then factoring on that figure across the board, the salary scale goes up that much, meaning overall it's going to be easier to hire people, easier to train. Meaning overall, it's going to be easier to hire people, easier to train. We got one in twenty twenty, we got one in twenty twenty-one, but look over there at the county. They got in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, higher COLAs. Look at twenty twenty-three, we got two percent, they got six. And look at the market salary scale adjustments for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, which is when the county is doing its salary compensation study. We got nothing. Not included. So the salaries alone for Saint Mary's County government employees since that time have gone up forty-seven point eight four percent, and ours have gone up twenty-five point five percent. This slide shows you the compression from minimum wage for basically the library assistant, the librarian, and the minimum wage employee. And you see that for twenty twenty-three, we're already starting to see that gap become almost non-existent. And the gap between even our higher paid employees. You know, there's a reason why we send people to the leadership training program, why we, for some positions, we have to have a master of library of science. Those are skilled professionals and that gap with minimum wage keeps growing. I'm sorry, keep showing slide please. All right, here's our turnover rate for the last couple of years. A lot of people left because of COVID. This is a public job. So that's mostly the fifty-seven percent there over there, but forty-three percent for new employment better paid or otherwise dissatisfied. And most of that's new employment or better pay. The exit interviews are confidential. They cannot be shared. But I tell you that people who leave here by and large say, I love the job. I love working for the library. I love that this makes me feel like I'm serving my community. But with Target paying twenty-two dollars an hour in benefits, with McDonald's paying twenty dollars an hour, you can get paid per day. You don't have to wait for a weekly paycheck or a five week paycheck. We're having trouble competing. That's not even talking about the base, which of course we know will never be able to compete with the average salary there, a hundred thousand dollars. Go ahead.
I just want to tell you a few stories that we're hearing from staff and what we're hearing is, I love the job, but I need full-time employment. I love the job, but I can't afford to buy a second car for my family, so I have to ride share or I have to use an Uber to get to work because my spouse is using the car. Or we even had a situation where uh, an employee who has since left us had to borrow money from another employee to buy gas to get to work. So those are the things that we're hearing as the leadership team and how hard it is on our frontline staff to um, make ends meet.
And, and I am concerned about some of our other employees, people who we view as rising stars in the organization. At least one of them I think is going to make a fantastic library director somewhere someday. But with Calvert Library paying more for less authoritative position than ours, you know, they're tempted. Slide please.
A question if I may, on the right hand pie chart, I guess, that one right there, is there any way for, I'm going to use the term lobbying purposes, that the right-hand side of the right-hand chart might be broken down into percentages? We, we have kind of a mobile population here. People come, somebody gets transferred away. It's not just always pay, not just dissatisfaction. We have retirements. But i- if that could be broken down into some more discreet numbers, it might be helpful.
We, we had them broken down and we just unified them to show you, this is what we think the main sort of cause is. And incidentally, the one on the left is the previous year and then then this year. So we, we, we can break them down. We had them broken down. Yes.
Um, I will say that I do know all these numbers and on the right, current year, we haven't lost anyone to moving or transferring. And the previous year, we lost either one or two to a transfer. So most of that is for better pay at other jobs or full-time employment.
And yes, we can break out those numbers. But no, it's, yeah, this is certainly a place where there's transitions and, and we've lost some very fine employees who, so I wish I were leaving, but you know, when this house gets transferred, they have to go. But that's not what's happening right now. Slide. So not surprising when you have turnover like that, you're constantly having to do job ads, you're constantly having to look at applications, you're constantly having to interview. And then you're also having to train the new people. And kudos to our management team for keeping up. Kudos to our employees. As they say, I think we're still offering a great service here at Saint Mary's, kind of like, none of our new employees are repeating up here. But it really does mean then that when you're doing all that, you've got less time to do other things. So we figure with all that coming in and the training, that the approximate total cost for new hires in the current year is about thirty-seven thousand dollars. It does have a dollar cost to it as well.
Michael, if somebody wanted to nitpick this, let's say at the commissioner level, how would you defend where those numbers come from?
Can you hear me? I'm, I'm happy to speak on that. I'm Amy Dickinson. I'm the branch manager at Leonard Town. Amy Ford and I put these numbers together. Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Um, so essentially, we did an analysis of the amount of time that we ourselves worked on it, our assistant managers and the front-facing staff. And that's one of the things about libraries is when you come into this library, you can't just say, oh, I'm only going to work the desk. I'm only gonna work this back area. You kind of have to have knowledge in all areas of it. So it's a very extensive training process, and that's why it does take seventy-five to eighty-five hours now. I will let you know that those seventy-five to eighty-five hours were broken down for what it costs for managers, what it costs for assistant managers. A lot of this burden comes down on our frontline facing staff because there is kind of a shadowing period for them. But those numbers were taken at the base rate of pay. So this potentially is actually a larger number for any party who's been here more than a year or so. So um, we did in the comparison of the two busiest branches and in comparison, of course, with AM's training as well, it is seventy-five to eighty-five hours. And I'm happy to answer any other questions. Yes, yes, we do.
And I will um, just add to that, that not every slide, but um, the most significant slides I intend to include in our budget presentation. We will not be allowed to keep that as a budget presentation. I go to hear the budget hearing. Sometimes they call me up, sometimes they don't. But it's not like they're going to say, well, Michael, present your budget. They already see it. But I think it's important to include these slides in that presentation. So if we could slide please. Okay, so this basically shows what the pay scale COLA percentage increase is by position. And that can sound complicated. Basically, if you look at the gold slide, go ahead.
All right, it's the COLA increase um, of the minimum wage versus ours. So minimum wage is the light blue. The dark blue is what our employees received over those years, and the yellow line is what the county gave themselves.
So you, you basically can see that our COLA is simply not keeping up and minimum wage is actually doing far better in some ways than the COLA. Even that the county gives themselves, although now it's starting to normalize at that six percent.
I understand. This is a graphic representation of a chart, that columnar chart that we saw earlier.
Yes.
About all those years where nothing was happening.
Yes.
Okay.
Slide. Um, these are our salary scales and they basically also reflect COLAs. The salary scales go up when we get a COLA. And you see basically that over the years since twenty fifteen through twenty twenty-three, pretty, pretty flat. Slide. We're comparing these salary scales of, and these are minimums, these are not actuals. You know, people's actuals, we don't go out and try to capture, but um, with our rather large turnover, I think we're probably close to the bottom of the scale. And Calvert, which has no part-time library assistant employees, all of our customer service staff and above are full-time with benefits, not surprisingly has has longevity. Go ahead.
They do have part-time um, positions, but they're all librarians.
Yeah.
Um, and they do have benefits. Their, their part-time staff do have, excuse me, benefits.
And so that, you know, they'll have pages as well, but, but basically, um, we are the um, we are the dark blue and Calvert is the light blue and Charles is the gold. If I'm, no, I got it backwards. We are the dark blue, Charles is the light blue and Calvert is the gold. And you, you can see that at the substitute level, people we ask to come in and, you know, serve when we need a vacancy filled. Our library assistant, that's our customer service staff for the most part, and our librarians are the ones who do the programming for the most part. Are not being paid at the same level on an hourly basis.
So we, we are dark blue. Charles is gold and Calvert is the light blue.
Sorry, I heard Michael first.
It's also important to note that the structure is slightly different in the three libraries. So we compared like positions to like. Um, and so Calvert pays their substitutes at, at the same rate that we pay our library assistants. And, and so they're just a higher position there. And then if you notice, once you get up to library one, and then if we had it on the slide, we don't, but librarian twos, which are a higher level librarian, it gets even worse. Um, they're even higher. So we just compared our lowest positions to, to show you where the scale is, but the compression goes all the way through the scale, um, all the way up. So you can see that Calvert starts to really take the lead in those bachelor degree positions. And, and they just get higher and higher as the education level goes up, where ours really doesn't. We don't reflect that education component very well in our pay scale.
And these are, these are current um, salary years. Please go ahead and slide. So um, we're going to talk in a minute about what we would like our budget requests to be. But this budget request right here would be making up for the lost pay just for employees for the most part. But we do ask for two new positions. One for the Leonard Town Library.
It's four, actually.
Four, four positions. Hang on. Uh, Lexington Department Library Assistant, yes, and Charlotte Paul Library Assistant. So we'd be asking for four positions here. But basically, um, we're looking at a fiscal year twenty-four salary request of totaling three point nine seven two billion and compared to two point six from the county now. That middle one, there, there are some state funds involved with this as well. We'll be talking about state money in a second here, but so obviously this would be a substantial increase. But it is based on, yes, with the four new positions, what making up for the past would be. So that's a step increase in minimum wage increase. It's not including benefits, things like that.
Michael, this might, might be coming up, but that's just to make up, to add.
Yeah, well, this is, there, there are four new positions here, but everything else is making up for the past.
And a salary scale adjustment.
Yeah.
The fifteen dollars an hour.
Yes, so.
Twenty-five. Are we putting in everything we need before twenty twenty-five? I mean, everything.
Yes, yes. So, and we're going to show it in, I think, the next slide.
Okay.
Or two slides, sorry. Um, but that it will include, um, that difference in pay includes the making up that we're doing and a salary scale adjustment, which will get us closer in line to where we need to be to have that compression pushed farther apart on our salary scale.
And that means substitutes and everything else.
Everybody.
Okay.
It's across the board.
The whole thing. That's what.
If we do a salary scale adjustment, we do it all the way down. Or out.
I think making up is kind of a dangerous uh, term. I think it implies we're paying you backwards. We're catching up, not making up. Just a thought.
Totally, uh, and I agreed. So just a couple of reasons uh, for why um, we do hire internally as often as we can. And very often that's what we, we do. Um, and sometimes then we, in order to adjust for what they're making now, we need to go above the base salary scale because I think it's like above where they do the bottom scale, but I mean, turnover remains high. You know, we, we have had people say, well, what are you going to pay? And we say X and they say, no way. If we have an employee we really want to keep or if we have an employee we really want to hire in, sometimes we're not at that base salary level. We have a new accounting process that I think gives us a more accurate idea about what forthcoming expenses will be. We have sometimes used substitutes of people who are currently in positions because we've got vacancies, credit, you know, people not in the job. When you've got forty percent turnover, you've got a lot of vacancy credit where you're not paying out the money. We do offer some small pay increases. So when there's state mandated training, like the leadership training, they get small amounts for that. And they also get um, some bonuses, um, not bonuses, some increases budget allowing for longevity. So if somebody's been here ten years, they may get.
On that last bullet, where there is a mandated requirement, are we comparable to other jurisdictions also with that same mandated requirement?
No, um, basically, that's for, for example, a library assistant, somebody we want to have the skills for librarian. They take this mandated training, so they're going to get an increase from us, but everybody else is already paying them more to start with. And so they're going to get an increase at their organization as well, but they're already starting at a higher level is our problem.
Um, I also wanted to point out that this is to help explain that difference on the last slide. So on this slide, that third or the second column, this is a lot of the reasons that those finances were different. So we've just had uh, this change in what we asked from the county versus what we actually have had to spend on salaries.
Uh, slide. So um, we're, we're looking at the proposed salary scale for fiscal year twenty-four with those numbers in place. And where it's going to move our employees. And where it's going to move our employees, um. Above minimum wage. Um, so currently our library assistants start at sixteen thirteen and they would go to twenty. Um, our librarian ones would be twenty-six sixty-two and currently they're in twenty-one twelve. And our librarian twos would go from twenty-three sixty-eight to twenty-nine zero-two, making them roughly equivalent to some of the other counties. Slide please. And these are just some areas that are not necessarily specifically related to salary. Um, and we've talked before about how. In order to keep up with salaries and do our best with that, we've sometimes cannibalized other parts of the budget. Um, in twenty fifteen, we were putting four hundred and ten thousand dollars into materials. Now, at that time, it was always solely print materials. And now it's three hundred and fifty. We have added ten thousand for digital materials. And. Our friends at the library money often goes towards digital. So the overall total might be the same, but we get far less in materials than we did in fiscal year twenty fifteen for that amount of money.
This slide really shows how we are adding services constantly. So. Um, we added the maker space at Leonard Town, but we didn't get a budget for it. So it's really showing how we. Are robbing Pay, Peter to pay Paul, um, in our budget. We really haven't gotten any substantial increases to increase the print budget and. We've added so much digital, we've had to pull from the print budget to pay for the digital and, um. The virtual services, you know, we've added Kahoot for the trivia, which is hugely popular. Um, but we didn't get a budget line item for that, so, um. We're just, we're, we're constantly adding, and then it's also shows programs, which I don't know if you noticed on this year's budget, but that's almost spent out for the year. And over ten years, we've only added a thousand dollars to that budget. And we're, we're using friends of the library money to, to. Supplement that budget, but that's not sustainable. So.
So we, we've pretty much got to the point where we don't add anything new and we talked about cannot be as something that we simply can't add. Or frequent with something we simply can't add. Um, we. You know, as new services come along and other counties have them and they're getting demand, we, we find we just can't necessarily do that. And. So we basically are at the point where we simply cannot afford to do any more than we're doing right now. And. Even that, staying even within that rate isn't going to be a challenge for us. Slide. So, um, this would be what our budget request would be. For fiscal year twenty-four, assuming that this is the direction you want us to go. And we'll talk about that in a second. Um, so. There's our twenty twenty-three budget, um, from the county, three point three one million. We'd be looking at four point six to eight million instead. We have a very good idea of what our state funding is going to be, and it's going to be maybe nine thousand dollars more than it is now. Um. Keeping fines, damages and services about the same. Rents. I wish we didn't even put these into the budget, but they ask about it. Basically, money comes in, but it's always for something. It's not like other than about. Eighteen thousand dollars that is for staff development that we get, that we say, oh, this is for our employees. It all goes towards something else. Um, donations and contributions, we just factor that in, plenty of friends, they be more generous, um. Investments in miscellaneous, um, that's basically money we get on some of our accounts that we have, um. And typically what we say our fund balance, that's sort of like, here's what the overall budget is, and here's what we think we're going to have to take out of our rainy day fund to cover it. So that would be roughly what our budget would look like for, um. Fiscal year twenty-four. Um, you see that it's already short of what Calvert and Charles have, but. This would be something that would allow us to raise salaries, but also we could. Have more materials, we could raise the furniture budget, we'd have a couple more staff. This would get us through and allow us to expand operations or at least continue operations well. Slide.
And we go back, this is way back. The subject of fines, I know we've had discussions about that. What is the current status of overdue?
Uh, by state law, we cannot charge minors for library fines. And we don't do that. Um, we had hoped to go fine-free and Calvert and Charles have gone fine-free. But we're getting, it's maybe thirty-three thousand, it's not a lot from fines. But. When I look at our budget, where am I going to give away thirty-three thousand dollars? So we haven't asked to do that. Um, that's a position for us. Um, I'd love to go fine-free and, and this budget would allow us to, to do that. Um, but. You know, we're not going to go and say, give us. This much money and, and, you know, we're still going to charge fines, but we'll have to see. My, my employees, my, 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 my colleagues are nodding no, if we do, we'll find still into the budget. It's just a hard ask to go say, give us this and no incident, we're going to give away that, um. I'd still like us to go fine-free at some point. Um, this is our state funding, um, and we can't see, can we move that dialogue box somewhere? Thank you. Um. The increases, do we have that slide in here with the increases?
The dollar amount?
Yeah. Okay. Uh, did it, did, is this, is this in the packet? Uh, okay, all right. I just want to review what the increases in state funding have been.
What percent of the overall county budget would this four point six be?
Michael, we aren't quite sure because we don't know the next year's budget yet.
It might be good for us to come up with some kind of ballpark estimate, though, as part of the case to make with the commissioners.
We agree with you. Um, we just, we can go based on last year's numbers and kind of the projected new amounts. Um, we just weren't sure. Um. Exactly how to present that, um, but we're very confident we wouldn't be going over one percent. Um, but we can look at the numbers kind of based on what has happened in the past.
Okay, so, um. The dollar amount increases in twenty sixteen, twenty-three thousand, twenty seventeen, twenty-nine thousand, twenty eighteen. And twenty nineteen were both fifty-three, a, a new funding formula came in. And we use those to make up full-time some positions when we have created some full-time positions over the last seven years. Uh, twenty twenty went down to thirty-four, twenty twenty-one, thirty-four, twenty twenty-two went down to twenty-five, and twenty twenty-three was only fourteen. So. Although the budgeted amount. Can vary, it's done per capita, but here's the issue for Saint Mary's County. One of the things they factor in is the overall county belt. And overall, Saint Mary's County is not doing too bad. Um, and so we get a slightly lower percent. And in fact, for this year, if they hadn't changed the formula, and I do need to thank our county commissioners and our delegation who said, that's going to disadvantage Saint Mary's and, and they did. Help change this. We were going to get a deficit in state funding for this fiscal year and right now that hadn't changed it. And we anticipate about nine thousand dollars next year, so. You see it's gone up, but it's reasonably flat. And also, this is not making up for. The other amounts of money that we're not getting from the county. And if you look to the percentage of our income. Has gone up from about eighteen percent. Being funded by the state through, um. Twenty percent, twenty-one percent this year, twenty percent. That's because the state amount is less than it has been in prior years. So although the state increases have been reasonably small. There's still a larger part of our portion of the budget because the county budget is simply not keeping up with the state in terms of percentages. Slide.
Twenty percent and the eighty percent comes from county.
Uh, well, there's a small percentage that will be fines, fees.
Yeah.
Donations, uh, interest, but yeah, it's, call it seventy-eight percent anyway.
But the law is we, uh, we are not, the employees are still state employees and not county employees.
No, we're not really state employees either. Um, we, we exist in kind of a sort of county employee, but not completely in the county status.
So that's therein lies the problem. That, that's the issue.
Yeah, if we had stayed in with the county since twenty fifteen, and again, I don't know why we split out. All those amounts that went to the county presumably would have included library employees too. How if they were county employees, they would have excluded them. But I don't think they could.
That was my question too. When did we, when did all?
Twenty fifteen is when that, and again, that happened right before I got here and I don't know why. If anybody knows, please let me know. Slide.
Even I don't know all the details of why that happened.
Okay, so just to compare to the county, what these numbers would give us. Even with that market salary adjustment of twenty percent. Is up about twenty-two point five percent. And over the years. We'd be at forty-eight percent and the county would still be at fifty-two point three four. So this wouldn't close the gap. But it would get us a lot closer. And of course, what you have to factor in is if you'd made that much more earlier, could you have put it into savings? Could you have had something then? As opposed to, well, now we're going to get a larger increase now.
Michael, when, um, Calvert made their twenty-one percent increase, um, this past year, were they in a similar catch-up situation?
Um, no, uh, the whole county got that for Calvert. It wasn't the libraries and they're the library employees, get what the county employees get. So it was the entire county getting that twenty-one percent quota basically, and, um. Yeah, you know, I, I don't know Calvert's finances or how they included that, but the, but the whole county, all county employees got that. So it wasn't the librarians being playing catch-up, yes.
Um, it was at least largely in part to a salary study though. So, um, Calvert did a salary study compared to other. Um, counties throughout Maryland and found that they were remarkably low and they did do this big, um, salary jump. And, um, obviously we're lower than Calvert was before the jump. Um, and so it was, that was at least a huge portion of the reason that they did it. And they did it where Saint Mary's, starting in twenty twenty, did it over three years. Calvert chose to do it in one jump.
And just to reiterate, but you already know, we were not included in that three year period. This is depressing. Slide.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I have a question about the last slide.
Yes, please go back and Michael, your question.
How do we explain the Margaret set salary scale adjustment column? Uh, cause it looks like the library at twenty-four percent total is coming out way ahead of the county government at thirteen point six percent total.
Um, that's because the other lines, the cola and the step not being there. So that twenty-four percent is all in one year, you'll notice pretty much for the most part. And so over the years, the Saint Mary's County Government employees were at thirteen point six. This would raise us to twenty-four, um, but it still does not completely close the gap to the total when you factor all those other things like the cola and the steps in. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
So this would be, um, and can we move the box again, please? Just to make sure I'm getting it right. Um, that, that, this would be where we were with our substitutes, our library assistants and our librarian ones. Um, with this adjustment. So Saint Mary's dark blue, uh, Calvert, light blue, navy blue, um, and Charles in gold. And you see that we wouldn't be quite there for the library assistant, but we'd be competitive with the librarian one. And these are most of the employees who are going to be in the scale. It doesn't count administration. Um. I, I will not tell you the salary, so the Calvert and Charles Life Director, although I know them. And let's just say, um, I could do better.
And just to, just to, to point out that in this slide, this is. Our twenty twenty-four comparing to, um, Calvert and Charles's twenty twenty-three.
Yes, this is.
Because we have no way to know what their projections are.
We don't, we don't know what, what they will be raised to. Thank you for that, um, addition, Amy. Yes, absolutely. And that's spelled out on the right-hand side there. This is what they are currently making. So we can assume that those are going to go up for both of them.
I think this is a, this is a good point to note that. While we, while we have input here today on some of what we'd, we'd call footnotes. I would suggest that there be a way to attach a footnote to some of these slides. Otherwise you don't, you don't have a full understanding of the context of what you're looking at.
Well, what I will have to do in addition to presenting the slides, and I do this every year anyway, is provide a narrative. And I think that will spell all this out as well. Um, but to the extent that, um. They'll be not seeing it as a slide presentation, but only have the, in front of them. I think you're absolutely right that it's going to be important to have explanatory notes.
Is it possible for us to ask the commissioners to do a presentation?
Um, I don't think it will be impossible to ask.
I mean, I, I feel like it's worth sharing this information with them and I think. It would help our case a lot more, um, than just giving them the presentation in paper form.
Um, we can certainly ask, um, and. Um, we, we could hold the. Public forum about this, um. So yes, um, we, we can do that.
Michael, a previous slide had the, um, um, physical circulation and ours are higher than the other two counties.
Yes, um, we are higher than Calvert, although if you look at the fact that we've got more people. Per capita, they're roughly about the same, but substantially more than Charles, despite the fact that Charles has far more people than Saint Mary's County. Our, our circulation has been the highest and for years, this library. At Lexington Park was the highest circling library in Southern Maryland and Leonard Town was second. Now they're running about even. Um, of these two, but they're still the highest circulating libraries in Southern Maryland.
And with the disparity in funding, it's like the other counties are, um, buying a, a dinner for a family of four with a hundred dollars, or we're trying to buy dinner for a family of five with only not eighty or ninety dollars.
That would, that would be about right. That's an, an comparison. And the other thing, and I think there might be one more slide where we'll see that, is that they are however, closing the gap. And in large part, that's not because they've got more money in their collection. Then they had, and we were putting more money into our collection than the other libraries were. It's because programming brings in people, brings out books. Slide. Well, here's kind of our hopes for this request. First of all, if we see. First of all, if we see lower turnover, we're not going to have the training time. We will have more experienced employees. It takes a long time to become a seasoned programmer and really do it right. And you know, especially our youth services programmers are rock stars, the community loves them. But getting to the point where you're really helpful and really doing it well and really rocking those kids takes years before you really are up there. We've got some natural talent, but yes, also just continued institutional knowledge, more programming.
Yeah, and um, Jill said, Jill is our youth coordinator. We still aren't back to our storytime schedule that we had before COVID because our entire youth services department is new. And they are still getting training. And so we just can't do as many storytimes with newer staff.
And um, um, I was approached by the American Library Association about having the Thinking Money exhibit come back. And we had very low attendance for the exhibit because we were at the, at the very height of um, of the Omicron wave. Uh, and so people weren't going anywhere. Um, they were home, they were homesick and we had to turn it down because we didn't have the capacity to take on or change uh, upcoming programs. Um, there just was no time to be able to, to do that with um, less, less seasoned staff. Um, they, they just, they just take longer to do, to, to plan programs while they're, while they're getting up to speed. And so we had, we had to, we had to turn that down, which would have been a major attraction.
Um, obviously, if we have staff who are struggling um, at current wages, a little bit more money is going to be very helpful for them. We think that it will be an overall morale improvement. And I will say that staff know that we're hearing them and they want us to ask.
Michael, on this slide, I think we could strengthen the bottom bullet. If in parentheses, we indicated a couple of strong partnerships. That to me denotes something external to us that we're doing out in the community as opposed to programs which are things we're doing kind of internally. And I think it, it's a bigger selling point for our reach being maybe more broad and more deep than would be obvious to the commissioners.
We actually have that in the notes for this slide to point out all of the work that we've done with the health department. The Judy Center, the Promise Resource Center, the Community Corrections Center, Cedar Lane, the Veterans Home, Social Services. We are out and helping the community and that's on top of all of what we do while we're in the library. Um, yeah.
Yeah, I will, um, I, I will say thank you to Amy for it because she's not self-promoting at all. I don't know if you saw her letter about the literacy council in the Southern Maryland news. Um, she's basically the chair of the board of literacy council, so. Um, we are just so involved with the community in the library and we are, you know, what, what I'm going to say is that, al- although yes, I'm very excited about the mobile library. We got staff for that and we got funding for that. Without that, there's no way we could even think about it. And we're now at the point where we can't do anything more and we're going to have to think about cutting back on some of the things that we do. And we haven't formulated a plan yet for what that's going to look like, just that we're close to the breaking point in terms of staff right now. And it's been a long time. COVID certainly hasn't helped, but this is a demotivator. Our staff are aware of what we get. And when we, everybody else gets something and they don't, it really doesn't help how they feel about working for the library. Slide these. And if you look at our customer comments and the way people view the library and the community and how very busy we are. You know, I, I've given the commissioner statistics before, just in collection alone. For every dollar, and this is at reduced circulation levels that we have right now, um, compared to higher population in the county. For every dollar, just in the collection alone that you put into the library, we give back based on circulation and those books being out in community hands, at least four dollars. When you invest in the library, you're building something for the whole community and it's not just the programming, just the, you know, I've got two kids, let's say this is a hypothetical example. Do I want to buy fifty books a week, which they library folk go through, do you want to get a library? This is an investment in the community and we would very much like to see that investment be there. That's all we're asking for. What about us? Everybody else got this. What about us?
That, that circulation of value that you just described would make an excellent end chart to a proposal like this.
So you, you just see some of our staff there working with any number of people, programming, getting digital content for people, answering questions, circulating materials, helping people get jobs, helping people get computer skills.
Yeah, our staff really are, are our biggest asset to the community. Um, and that's why we are focusing on salaries in this budget ask and not so much in some of the other line items. Because this is, they're our most important asset.
But this, I should point out though, that this would be think give us funding for more materials. You know, it's not like this is all about the staff. This is the library as a whole. This is the impact the library as a whole can have. This is us being able to provide the best for St. Mary's County and for our users. Yes.
Michael, I, I think you're preaching to the choir. We all believe that. I'm sure everyone's sitting here, but we need to, uh, the staff works hard and we know, you know, all the efforts that's put in and we want this salary increase. I'm leaving the board and have given all I can give at this, this point, but this, the systemic plan to, so we won't have to run over every year and do this. Every, you know, and look, we're behind, we need to move forward. So all those community partners need to be at these budget hearings. They need to be briefed. I'm sure everyone would come out and talk at a budget hearing. Also, what about uh, a long-term, we need a year's salary study. That should be included somewhere. Why aren't we getting our salary study like everyone else? Also, a, a funding policy. I, I hope we will revisit why we were taken off the counties, taken, why our employees are not part of the county. Like we said, it, all of a sudden it happened. So we, so we need to get with those commissioners to try to get back on as county employees and we won't have to go through this, you know, again and again, every year. So I'm looking at, at a plan for community outreach, a plan for getting policies developed. Uh, even the county commissioners, well, if we went back on with the county uh, uh, employees, they have a policy. So unless we, i- if we go back to there, but maybe we can get the policy developed for the library. If that's what it takes, if they don't want to put us back in, then let's get that policy that we get the same increases. So, or I'm just throwing out ideas, but I think at this juncture, it is going to be critical to get the community here at those hearings and involved in maybe a small group, maybe a work session. Bring all those partners in and show them what is at stake here. If we don't get this funding, you can't keep it, leave people uh, being part-time and you know, saving money for this and Rob, like you said, Robin Peter to pay Paul. So our, our PR folks or whoever would do this, it's just going to be critical to get that, you know, and I think it's all worth it.
And what is presentation date for this budget?
Um, I'd have to look it up for you, but um, there's two, three. Um, there's the initial one where the county commissioners review the budget submissions made to them. And I, I should tell you, I already know that most of the departments are going to be asking for big increases this year as well. Um, so at that one, they say, all right, and here's the library's budget submission. Sometimes I've been asked to come forward and answer questions, sometimes not. Um, and then there's the public hearing where the members of the public can turn up and make comments on the budget. And then there's the final presentation based upon what they heard at the um, at the public hearing and they're allowed to make amendments.
And that's where Dr. Walthour, I think, has hit the nail right on the head. If, if we can get representation speakers for that allotted two or three minutes, somebody from the Veterans Home, for example, this is what the library means to us. We don't want to lose that support and throughout all those partnerships. I think it would go a long way for them to look at us in a different light.
Well, um, Jim and Janice, you're both right. And we, we have a new commissioner board and I'd like to take my chance. Um, I, I think that this is the year we do need to be doing that. And I, I will tell you that in the past I've been told, um, best not to turn up at a public hearing and make a lot of claims, um, but I'm afraid that that's going to have to change.
The, the public hearings are after they have decided where they want to put the money. Then they have money left over and they say, well, now if, if we hear people, you know, outrage loud enough, then we'll put it there or we'll do that. So there's really got to be the step in between as well as that. And that is really talking with uh, maybe the two-on-one with the commissioners, uh, you know, the board members meeting, like uh, Jim, I think we've done that before about some of the issues, uh, bringing this budget, if they don't want to show it, well, shims, give me your packet. Well, I think we have a right like to ask to talk with them, to show them this entire packet. So I know all that's got to be a prerequisite to the final, you know, where we all bring our partners out and even a letter writing campaign or something like that to send to them in the middle of the process. You know, from these partners, write a letter, you know, make a phone call or do. And I know, uh, we don't want to keep the fires stoking so hot that it'll be uh, that revenge element, uh, but we have new people. So it might be, might be a different story. And at least I know at least two of them have said the money needs to be spent. We don't want to have thirty-three million dollar a bu- a surplus. We want to make sure we fund the people then with the money that they need. So we have people.
They just put out in public.
That's right.
That's out there.
So that, that, that's a plus.
Well, we're going to certainly ask for our share. Um, I, I had two alternative budget proposals for you, but my question to you right now is, are you comfortable with me presenting to you this budget request in January? And you would vote to approve it and you need to decide that as a board, even though we'll have three new members. But you, I think you need to decide, yes, we're comfortable with you going forward with this as our request for next year.
It does present a dilemma, I think, some of us, and I'll speak primarily for myself. Um, because this is fun, basically a struggle is going to carry into the new year and I'm not going to be part of that, nor is Janice. Um, so it'd be very simple to say, yes, go ahead and proceed with that because we're not going to be here to help you fight that battle.
Well, the, 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 the new board will have the s- the say, the final say.
But, but let me, let me, I mean, again, I'm being candid and um, I think it's a substantial increase, over forty percent increase in the budget. Um, and considering our history, and many of these points that are part of this presentation have been made previously and without really much success. Uh, and we're losing the opportunity potentially according incrementally improvement and allowing then the commissioner simply to categorically state that this is too extensive and too expensive. And then therefore just disapproving everything. Um, so I think my suggestion would be simply you look at some of the changes, some of the proposals and make some decisions as to how and when you want those increases. I think, for example, part of the presentation is to improve salaries of the current staff, but then add four new positions. That seems to be stretching it too far. Want to eliminate the four positions and focus on the salary increase. Again, it's your decision. It's the, an issue that, um, again, as I mentioned, I'm going to be part of, because they don't get on the board. But I, I think I'm, my biggest concern is it, is the impact on morale. If this is not successful, is this being perceived as the last effort to try to improve situations? And therefore, if it's not approved, will people feel, well, it's hopeless? Rather than trying to look at more incremental changes and improvements uh, to address some of the problems that are valid. And as Janice has indicated, we've, we've been aware of this for ten years. Um, but I think again, just, all I'm saying is consider the practicalities and the realities of what we've dealt with to this point, uh, before we go forward in recommending a substantial increase in the overall budget.
Um, so you, you don't have to make a decision today, so I will ingenually present you with some alternatives with that as a consideration. And we'll just see what the board wants to report with then. I will say that what we probably need to do, no matter what, is look ahead to a public forum, which the commissioners occasionally have. Before the budget process even happens, there might be one in January, there might be one in February, and turn on our supporters then, no matter what.
May I speak?
Go ahead.
I, I respect what you have to say, Jim, but I feel like we're in this position because we haven't asked the past ten years. I don't think it hurts to ask and they need to see the, the big picture here and we're going to have to cut services if we don't get anything. Um, and our staff are telling us, you need to ask for more. I mean, the staff survey had one ca- comment after another about, we don't make enough money. We, you know, salaries are a problem. And so I, I feel like if we don't ask for what we need and those four staff are because we're so short-staffed, we can't do, we're, we're having a hard time keeping up with what we're doing now. Um, so I see those four staff as a necessity. Um, and if you're going to cut something, then yes, those would be what I would do, um, is cut those four positions. But right now we have two staff for the mobile library and if either one of them gets sick, that means that mobile library isn't going out. So we need a third person there. And then I've cut staff from Charlotte Hall and put them at Lexington Park in Leonardtown because their business levels are so high, they have trouble um, keeping the desk manned. So I understand what you're saying, but from the staff's viewpoint, I really think we need to ask the big ask.
I understand that, Mary. And then again, um, the value of a board, this makeup is important because we bring different experiences um, to the forefront. As most of you may or may not know, my background is human resources. And, and what we saw in that occupation, a major transition in terms of the role of HR within businesses, based on one primary aspect of it, was the importance of realities of the finances. HR had always been dismissed as being unaware or un-inconsidered financial reality. as being unaware or unconsidered financial realities of the organization. And so therefore, their opinions and inputs were really dismissed. And that's a danger that exists in other categories, too. When you go in and request an increase of over forty percent of your budget, you may get dismissed by those decision makers, and that will do damage not only this year or next year, but many years after. So I think, again, it's a dangerous game to go into a budget process with a substantial increase. Again, especially considering the history. You know, you know what the state saying is about ignoring history. So I, that's my only concern. And again, it's not an issue that I can be there to help you with. But I think it's it's a, I I'm really concerned that you go in asking for too much. It the you'll be dismissed and considered to be an organization that doesn't consider economic realities.
I'm Michael Dunn. Do you want to speak?
Yeah, thank you. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. I appreciate, I take James' point, and I appreciate what everybody has said. I think the presentation makes a really ironclad argument for the salary increases. And I do think more information in the presentation about why the new positions are necessary would strengthen that element of it. So I didn't see as much of that. From my perspective, I do think it's important for us to go in with the big ask. I worry that it would be devastating for morale if the staff watched us as a board not step up to the plate, and if we if we kind of throttle this thing in its crib, rather than even giving it a shot to get any kind of yes. And I would really appreciate the chance to work with the staff to really finesse this presentation, knowing that whether it's delivered in person or if a commissioner reads it or flips through it for thirty seconds, that the slide deck itself is going to be as impactful as possible in terms of getting our message across. And I appreciate all the work that has gone into it so far. And I really hope we can tighten it up and then kind of engage in a plan the way Janice laid out. I think that's a really excellent roadmap, as Janice and John indicated. So I really appreciate all the work that's gone into it, and I I do think it's important for us to step up to the plate and really make an effort over these next few weeks.
Well, well, Michael, just in terms of the future of the slide presentation, it is going to be pared down substantially to hit at the most major points, because we know we'll have limited attention. Unlike you who are committed to being here, and I thank you so much for that. But I think the most impactful slides make a strong statement. So I will present this as a budget request in January for board approval. We will have several days whereby if it is determined that that is not a good ask. And we'll just see where we are. I can think of at least two alternatives, and one would include only one new staff member. I'm sorry if that sounds disappointing to the best of you, but let's look and see what the board says is best. They do have to put their imprint on it, but it's going to be a huge ask. And my challenge to this county right now is, wait to any other agency that has done so much and received so very little the last six or seven years in terms of financing from the county.
Michael, in terms of next month, are you thinking about one or two fallback positions?
Let me think about that. I need to consider my leadership team and what their desire is. I like to lead as a servant leader. I I like to reflect the will of the people who work with me. I will come up with at least two, but they're all going to be very large.
Okay.
And if you would like a third, communicate with me online and just say, here's what I'd like to see, and I will certainly consider that.
Now, I would like to see this one with appropriate modifications to maybe strengthen the message, footnotes, et cetera. I understand the realities of the real world, but a backup plan or maybe two. But even if you go to, I would like to see that be considerably more than what we have a history of timidly asking for.
And Michael, the decision makers are the taxpayers. Bottom line. Because they decided they they're the ones that it's their money, and they're getting all these services. So let's begin with that thought in mind, those people that would, I know, if I had to take my own poll, they would want this library, the salaries to increase, so the services would not decrease. So that's just my take on it, the taxpayers, it's the services that we render to the people. If they know what we've been through here, I just have every, all the faith in the world that that they would support this.
Well, we have thirty nine thousand cardholders.
Yes.
Not to count the eighteen thousand student cards that we give out each year.
Yes.
There are a few people who like libraries in St. Mary's County. I will present a budget request to you next month, and thank you for this. It's a lot to take in, and for those of us who love libraries, it can be a little bit demoralizing. My management team has done a great job, I think, putting together a case. And we know the numbers. I think the numbers speak loudly, but let's see if we can't amplify that voice with some community support. We do have at least one more thing we need to do. Election of the twenty twenty-three board officers.
I ask a question to relieve this. You had used in a previous slide the phrase rainy day fund. Would you elaborate on that term, please?
Well, we don't, we have a certain amount of money sitting in the MGLIP account. Three hundred thousand dollars on average. It goes down to about one ten, it goes up to about six hundred. So there is money, but it's not enough to, you know, fund this kind of thing ourselves, certainly. And I won't call it a rainy day fund so much as it's a reserve operating budget. So we've got our checking account, and that account ranges between about, as I say, one ten to about maybe five hundred fifty thousand dollars, depending on when the state check and the county check come in.
And and did I read the audit report correctly? Did we have a fairly substantial end of year surplus?
I will, next month, I, you notice I didn't touch on that this month, and typically would in December. I want to present that to you next month, because I think I have more accurate features than. What surplus we do have comes basically from a vacancy credit sort of situation where we have high turnover, and we're not always paying people, but it's not that much. So election of officers, please. Jim, I'd like to turn that one over.
Yeah, fine. Yeah, at the last meeting, I asked the board members if they would like to be considered for the three positions, president, vice president, and treasurer. So I'm going to do it in reverse. I appreciate treasurer has agreed to ins stay in their role of treasurer, which is important because of this whole transition of the funds being transferred to the foundation. John Johnson has put his hand up to be vice president, and Michael Dunn as president. So those are the three individuals that have come forward, indicated their willingness to serve in those roles. I'd like to make the motion to accept Michael Dunn, John Johnson, and Professor Setlac for the officer positions for the board for two thousand twenty-three. Got it? Get a second?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Well, I I thank you so much for being willing to step into that role, Michael and John. I greatly appreciate it. Thanks for your contributions to the library, which are unpaid, but as valuable as any. We do have a couple of celebrations here. And the first is for the staff team who put together the staff day. The thing that struck me most, the staff day, was how many people are new this year. I need to get out to branches more. There are people I had never met, which was embarrassing for me. So at the staff day, I said, I've never met you before, talk to me today. And most of them did. We've got delightful employees. It was a great day. But boy, do we have a lot of fresh faces, and I'm thrilled that we're able to keep up the level of customer service that we still have with new employees. So Carla, Irma, Rosa, Nakamoto, Brianna Thorne, Morgan Butler, Amy Dickinson, Belinda Lloyd, all are earning hip hip hoorays, and thank you for your service. And I think we should mention Mary Ann in this, who was also instrumental and didn't decide she wanted her own hip hip hooray. The next one is for two ten-year board members. I have plaques for you. They're indoor/outdoor plaques. So my initial thought would be that we would put them on the benches at the New Lenartown Library. But I've decided instead that I'd like to ask you, and you can email me separately or communicate with me separately, where you'd like those, so we could put them outside a meeting room, and this is Janice's fault, our meeting room here at Lexington Park Library, or whatever, but rather than than give you photos of the three libraries, I mean, they're nice, but I wanted your names to live on here at the library for ten years of service. And let's face it, these have been ten years of triumph. That new library, which is incredibly beautiful because it reflects design choices from your staff, not to mention me. But getting to that point was a struggle, political struggles for things that weren't even library programs, challenges to us. You have stood up for the library bravely and with fortitude and with honor. And I just wanted to thank you so much, and that's why, as I say, we want your names to be here somewhere in the library. You just let me know. It looks like you've already sorted it out. So we're in Lexington Park, okay. We we were talking about a meeting room, and Amy said before we started, well, she's had so many meetings here, it's probably going to have to be a meeting room. So thank you for your ten years of service to the library and your support for me as well. You were both involved with the hiring decision that brought me here. I don't know if sometimes you regret it or not, but I I deeply appreciate all the support that you've given the library, and thank you so very much. And if I could get anybody else to give me some applause on that, please, come on.
I have enjoyed every minute of it. It's been a challenge, but it's also been great. The library is the best. This is a wonderful place to be, and the people are wonderful people. I've never had anybody say no. They always try to figure it out, work it out, find a way, and that's very important. And thank you, Michael, for your community service to make sure that the library is front and center in in this community, and also just your personal commitment, yours and Lisa's, to working with St. Mary's County, working in and for the citizens.
Yeah, again, just to follow up on what Janice's comments here, I I, this has been an interesting ten years of my life. And I appreciate the staff, and, you know, I haven't worked with many of you over the years, and really have a high degree of respect for library staffs. And I do hope, by the way, that you are successful, even though I'm presenting some caveats. Michael, again, it's been wonderful working with you. And I I'm glad we were part of that board that made a decision to encourage you to come on board. I don't feel I could ever match Janice's participation in on this board. You know, she has been a real value to this board far beyond I could or anybody else could. None of us are irreplaceable, but Janice comes awfully close to it. So Janice, I enjoyed working with you and appreciate the time we've worked together.
Well, if you compare yourself to Janice, you're setting a pretty high bar there. And I I don't know of anybody in the community who could easily stand up to that comparison. Janice, thanks for all you do for St. Mary's. At this point, we are ready to close down the public part of the meeting, but we do need to move into the executive session. And I think I forgot the form, but I'll get it to you if you just want to.
That's what I've got to talk.
We'll go on. Let's make a motion that we adjourn the public session for the purpose of going into closed session to discuss a personnel matter covered under Maryland law.
Okay, we'll consider that to be the motion.
I get it.
Uh, can I get a second?
Second.
Well, any questions or comments? If not all in favor, indicate by saying aye.